At 7:00 PM, would Councilmember Heiser lead us into the pledge, please?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Todd Smith.
Here.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Here.
Councilman Richard Gard.
Here.
Councilwoman Mary Ellen Christensen.
Present.
Councilman John Lars Baker.
Here.
Mayor Ron Wornness.
And I am present. I declare that we have a quorum this evening and we have no one missing, so we don't need to worry about that. Approval of the agenda, the chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Your Honor, I would move to approve the agenda.
Second. It's been moved in second, it is their discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak on it later. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone that would like to address the council at this time? Okay. The chair would, would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only? I snuck up on you too fast, didn't I?
Approval of the minutes October 15, 2013 regular council meeting, approval of the minutes November 5, 2013 finance committee meeting, approval of the finance committee recommendations for November 5, 2013, approval of the municipal court report for the month of October 2013, and a catering permit application received from Illinois here December, for December 6, 2013 festival of trees at Fremont Center, 5:00 PM to 1:00 AM.
Okay, Your Honor.
Yes.
It's the recommendation of the finance committee for the approval of claims to be paid in the amount of $1,421,294.59, checks written for payroll liabilities for October 18, 2013, in the amount of $231,206.82, for a total of $1,652,501.41. And we also at our meeting tonight had our operational summary report that you should have a copy of in front of you. And I don't know if Courtney wanted to share any more about that report?
Well, of course.
Of course.
Thank you, Councilman Smith.
You're welcome.
We're always very concerned about how our operations are doing. So as I said earlier, at the finance committee meeting, operations are your hard costs like electricity, heat, personnel, that sort of thing. And where we're sitting right now, we did the first quarter, so that's July through to September, and it indicates that our general fund is $427,000 in the red. We're not really concerned about that, let me tell you why. We're not concerned about it because there's some revenues that we haven't received, mineral royalties and severance taxes are not in this report because we have not received them, cigarette taxes are low, special fuels taxes, gasoline taxes are low, of course our court fines are down a little bit. Those are things you would look at from the revenue perspective, but from the expense side also, July through September, our high personnel costs for us because of the season. So we're not really concerned about it. Not when we're talking about a twenty-some million dollar budget, we're not worried about that. As I did last time, Councilman Baker, of course, always wants some comparative analysis and we like to please him. So, as you can see, for 2012, and I think that's on your back page, this time in September of 2012, we were at $569,000 in the red. So again, it's a timing between revenues and expense side, I just think we're doing a little bit better job this year. We also did one on the water fund, it indicates it was $622,000 to the good. Sewer fund was $108,000 to the good. Sanitation fund was $130,000 to the good. Airport fund, says we're $32,000 to the good. Don't get excited about that because that is only one quarter. So what are they going to do the rest of the year operationally? They're going to have to get some money from someplace and you all know where that comes from. So, this is a report for the first quarter of September 2013 for all funds. Do you have any questions?
Apparently not.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Councilman Baker, do you have any questions of Courtney? No? I know when I looked at it and I saw the budget side this high, and then I see the actual this high, that worries me a little bit, but very good explanation, thank you. Yep, yep, and it is interesting to see the comparison there that we're very close. Okay, thank you. Okay, the chair would entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda and the finance report. It's been moved in second, it is their discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, mayor votes aye. Agenda item number eight, Center of Hope update. Mr. Weaver or Mr. Yellow Kidney?
Hi, I'm Miller.
Yes, welcome.
Okay, I made sure you all got a copy of our quarterly report and I just wondered if there was any questions, have you had time to read it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, any thoughts? I've never really done this before, so you better kind of guide me through.
There's no right or wrong way to do it, so just, just tell us what you're doing and...
Well, as you can see there in paragraph two, we're doing a 72-hour observation period after a person gets into the Center of Hope, and that's to help them sober up. After they blow zeros and there's a zero on their CWA's, then we'll go ahead and stick them into something called social detox if that's what they want to do. A lot of people that come into the program actually choose to just walk back out. Once they hit zeros, some of them will even leave ahead of time. After they get into the social detox program, we look at trying to get them into treatment, we do happy chats, which is every shift we'll have a talk with that person, a five-minute talk just to kind of do some rapport, get to know the person, make it okay for them to talk about maybe a treatment option or pulling up and staying in a safe house like show wrap or something. We have, by our contract, we have to do like a 14-day period after they hit zeros. Once they do that, then we have to refer them on if they're not ready to go to treatment or anything like, there's a block, say, there's a bed bait out there, but we're still, we have to move them on, we have to send them down to both a shelter or show wrap or somewhere else, so we're kind of in a bind there. We've tried to move it around a little bit, I'm going to approach the board that governs what we do, ask them if I could use like 14-day business days instead of just 14 days right across the top. That gives us more time because the reality is, you know, openings at treatment programs are further out than 14 days. So otherwise, we're fixing up the program, we're trying to make it more like a home, we're going to change the numbers of like sober up beds, we're going to reduce those down to six as it says here, and we're going to do the social detox at a number of 11 right now. And we're waiting on funding until we can get that funding, then we'll be able to put in more furniture. So we'll have the beds that they're going to need. Right now, we have regular beds at the number of like eight, and some of those are for the female side, some of the male side, but the regular detox sober up beds, those are just mattresses on the floor, so we need to make regular beds for the social detox. Any questions so far?
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Christensen.
I was just curious, underneath the first quarter statistics says intakes, and it has unique individuals, I was wondering what that, what that meant.
I knew you were going to ask that. I've come there for the first time.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any, any further, actually, you know, in the year prior to us taking over this program, there was one person sent to inpatient treatment. To date, we've sent eight. So we're making a difference and hopefully that will impact this city and this county in a, in a big way in the future, keep those numbers going.
Okay.
So, anything else?
Yes, Councilman Baker.
I don't understand the acronym, CWA, C-I-W-A.
Those are symptoms as far as like someone who is actually still withdrawing might have an elevated heart rate.
I see.
All of that.
I see, so, so that's different than just their blood alcohol content.
Right.
I got you.
I guess one question, where you indicated that you were lowering the number of beds, how is that translating into the number of people that you can take in from the community? I know Mr. Weaver had mentioned that, that our cost of placing individuals in jail was going up and it was becoming a little bit of a burden, we had to readjust our, our budget as I understand it, and I was just wondering how that, is that going to get worse, better?
I, I think in the long run, we're going to see a change, but it's going to take a little bit of time to get there.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to drop that number of beds and the social detox beds are going to increase, like I said, but like, you know, having just six sober up beds is going to make the people on the street understand that there is a concept. Well, you need to make a change in your life, that's what the happy chats are all about. And, and yeah, it's going to impact this county and this city.
Oh, sorry.
We're at three with those, you know, if, if a person comes in, and we've seen a number of them, it's, it's reality, people come in with like seizures, having repeated seizures, we'll send them up to the hospital, they'll come back, maybe in an hour, and they're okay as far as like the medical people are concerned, but with us, you know, they come back and they're still having the seizures, we might see one and it'll reduce, and maybe in an hour, two or three next hour, it'll reduce by maybe one, but it's like, those close ops are pretty intense, those staff members have to go back and check on that person like every 15 minutes, every 30 minutes, just keep a real close eye on them because they might be medically cleared, but that doesn't mean they're okay. The progressive nature of addiction means, you know, a person keeps using, they're just not going to get better. Progressive, and that means it'd get worse, it will just continue to get worse. So, yeah, we, we have to keep a pretty close eye on a lot of the people that we see, they come in and, and they'll tell you straight up, I feel like I'm ready to have a seizure and, and, you know, they, they might be one of those people who AWOL frequently on us and we're, we're going to take them in. That's just the right thing to do, but it's like, you know, it makes it pretty intense, that staff, they, they earn every dollar they get.
Has there been any improvement from the tribes in terms of support for the center?
Um...
Is there communication going on or...
They, they have begun to start showing an interest. We're seeing like some of the programs come down and do presentations, I've actively sought them coming down doing like maybe suicide awareness presentation once, once a month or something like that, there's some interest. I'm on the solutions committee for the city as well, so it's like in there, I'm actively trying to get them to come down. We see the white buffalo recovery group, they come down, they do an addiction treatment education group, and they do a cultural group as well, so, you know, we're, we're seeing some things, but it can be better.
Okay. Like, anyone else have any questions that they would like to ask Mr. Yellow Kidney? One other question I would be interested in, is there anything happening with the transition housing, the building up there, is that still on the market or...
Um, just the past week, there were two buyers in the wings. They, they looked pretty interested.
Good.
But, you know, we've been hearing that since way back when. Not going to hold my breath on that one, but...
Sure.
The tribe actually was circulating and sending people to the solutions committee and that was their whole deal, was to talk about maybe turning that place back into a transitional program. And if they did, I mean, that would really help out all of us.
Yes, I agree.
So far though, it's just a rumor. I mean, I've asked them straight up, are you going to do this? They were like, yeah, yeah, we want to buy the building, and I said, I really want to have the building.
Yes. Well, it was, I personally feel that it was a great loss to the community when they closed it, but it was just the economics and the finances of it and that, so...
Right now, it's, it's, the upkeep for that building is on our shoulders and we're running up there two or three times a week because certain doors won't lock and the heat's still on here and there, I mean, we've got down most of the things in that building, but it's like, still, you know, we, we have to take whatever that building needs straight out of this budget and we feel every dollar.
Okay. Does there anyone else have any questions? Okay, thank you very much for coming this evening, we, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number nine, approval of Children's Advocacy Project, CAP, Contract for Services, City Administrator's Report, please.
Yes, Your Honor, on May 21, 2013, Heather Ross from the Children's Advocacy Project made a presentation in the city council about the services they provide and then asked the council to contribute annually $3,500 to their services. The city council approved their request, and since we have contracts with all of our other third-party requests or contract for services, we thought we should do the same with Children's Advocacy Project. The, the contract that's attached is very similar to all the other contracts except the services they actually provide. In the case of the Children's Advocacy Project, they are a nonprofit group that provide forensic interview in alleged child abuse cases. More specifically, they will providing pre and post forensic interview planning, conduct forensic interviews, referral to families for follow-up service, and multidiscipline team coordination. And so, we're recommending approval of this contract to be in line with everybody else and feel this is a worthy cause for the city.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion regarding the CAP project.
Your Honor, I would move to approve the contract with the Children's Advocacy Project. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, it is their discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, mayor votes aye. Agenda item number 10, Central Wyoming Skateboarders Association, CWSA, request for funding, City Administrator's Report, please.
Yes, Your Honor, on October 15, 2013, the Central Wyoming Skateboarding Association presented to the council a conceptual plan of the skateboard park they'd like to build in Riverton. They presented the actual design and gave an accounting of all the money they have raised. On October 17, they sent a letter addressed to the city council, mayor requesting the $40,000 that has been set aside for park improvements in the capital plan. And as I reviewed this, I struggled a little bit in my recommendation to give the full amount, I believe we should give some, and I struggled with the full amount because we're early in the year and there are probably many improvements that need to be made in the park. Staff has not identified any project for that money, however, something could come up. That being said, I have a lot of respect for this group because of all the hard work and dedication they have done to try to raise money. They are not simply asking for a handout without doing any work, they have hit the streets and done fundraisers and are doing anything they can. The other issue I can see is when I look at the finances, they're going to need that $40,000 this year and next year from the city, two years in a row, along with other groups substantially stepping up to make their $270,000 mark. The Tony Hawk Grant allows two, two years to build the park and the clock started ticking in September of 2013. If we just give 10 to 20,000, it's going to be hard to reach that goal, that's why I'm very supportive of giving the $40,000. What I would suggest, instead of actually writing a check out, is that we earmark this money and commit it to CWSA. The city can write a letter stating we have committed this amount, and then when it comes time to actually build the park, then we can write a check out. I don't think it'll matter too much that the money's sitting in our account or their account, as long as we have committed that money to them. And so it's my recommendation that we earmark $40,000 to the Central Wyoming Skateboarding Association for future skate park.
The chair would entertain a motion regarding the skateboarders' request for funding at this time.
Your Honor, I'd make the motion to approve the funding, $40,000 to be earmarked to the Skateboarders Association, with the attachment that the funds be used in the city park.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the $40,000 request, is their discussion. Councilman Christensen.
I have a question, they're going to need the $40,000 for two years, so is that doubled or just spread out over two years?
Oh, Your Honor, I'm, I'm just saying that I think that's what they're going to need, what we're doing tonight is only the $40,000 for this year.
Okay, because I was wondering if that $40,000 could be spread out over two years.
No, I, I was saying 40,000 this year and then 40,000 next year. When you start adding up all the finances of what they have to come up with, with 270,000, to do it in two years, they're going to need some substantial donations to reach that goal.
So the city would be spending 80,000 over that?
Well, that'd be 80,000 if, if you guys agreed with that for next year's budget.
Any other thing too, Your Honor, to keep in mind is, once this has been earmarked and the funds that we've talked about from the rec board, it certainly opens up for the, the ability for them to obtain some matching grants in pretty sizable amounts, so certainly we're just committing to 40 tonight if, if this vote goes through and we'll kind of deal with that down the line, but it, it does certainly open them up to maybe more, well, a lot more grant projects that they didn't have. that they didn't have the matching monies for, uh, thus far, so.
Any other discussion?
Your Honor.
Any comments? Yes, Councilman Baker.
Okay, so if this, uh, project doesn't get off the ground, uh, before we come to another budget process, we've, uh, we have a mechanism that we can take the forty thousand and stick it off to the side, and so it doesn't get swept back into the general fund as, as unspent, as unspent.
Courtney's gonna answer that question.
I always get called in the principal's office after this because I didn't tell him something, so. Um, two things that, that I think as, as well-informed elected officials, that you should understand when you make a motion like this. As of last year, the governmental accounting standards board issued a statement, which is statement number fifty-four, that said if you assign, commit, restrict, or, or commit any funds as non-spendable funds, it's for a certain reason. And when you do that, it has to be reported in the audit report. Now, that's not a bad thing. You could, your, your motion can say that you assigned forty thousand dollars, but from a financial perspective, in the audit re-report, it will be assigned funds, so it's gone. Now, I'm not gonna put that in a separate account, a cash account, but we will hold that in our audit report that that's what happened. Secondly, to my knowledge, we have never spent a line item to the fullest extent in the first four months of a fiscal year. Thirdly, if you make a motion tonight through this fiscal year, and I know you're seasoned elected officials, you can't bind future councils. So what you do after July first can change dramatically after that, if we get a new council in. So it's simply an action that can be removed by another action.
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Gardner.
Courtney, at, um, time of budget end, can we make that decision and pay that out if we choose to, so we don't bind the next council? Or does he go back in? I think Councilman Baker's question is then, is it lost back in the budget stream? Or is the only way to expend the money, uh, is the only way to expend the money by writing a check?
Yes. But...
Can we do that at the end of the fiscal?
Absolutely, absolutely. And the only reason I'm bringing this up now is, you know, that we had auditors in-house two weeks ago, and there are questions to me, because our audit doesn't only go to the end of the fiscal year, the audit is up until the date you receive that report. So until the middle of November, first of December, when we receive that report, I have to report to them what funds are committed, assigned, restricted, whatever, so that will go in the, in the report. And that's the only reason I wanted you to know that, that we do have to answer to that statement number fifty-four.
And, and Your Honor, um, Steve's request, I think, is a good one. Um, but, but I, for one, hope that the committee to revitalize the park may have, they may have needed funds. And next year, if they come in and have some good ideas, we would be wise to fund their ideas, possibly. And so we would still have the forty thousand, but maybe the skaters would only get twenty, and it's some other feature in the park, we'd get some funding also. And, and I don't think we obligate ourselves to that at this point, so we can still move that money around. And, and if the skate park is getting closer, or, um, they need more assistance, we can come back and say, let's concentrate our funds and give forty thousand dollars again. Um, but I think they would be wise to realize that we aren't obligated to another forty thousand dollar donation, and, uh, they may not get that, so. And I think the thing, the reason I like the earmark is that for some reason, um, the idea folds, the money's still held by the city. So I, I appreciate the idea of earmark. Yeah, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any, any other comments, yes, Councilman Christian?
Just to clarify, and I guess I didn't understand, if we, uh, earmark or restrict that forty thousand, we have to spend that forty thousand on that, what we earmarked it for, correct?
No, I'm sorry, I think I confused you.
Okay.
Um, Councilman Christensen, I think I confused you. That's simply from an audit perspective.
Okay.
That if you state in a motion that you've assigned those funds, they consider it spent, and it is reported in the audit report, it is a spent, whether you've written a check or not.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Fabian.
Um, I guess the one thing that, that I see, um, while I certainly have no problem in committing to the skate park in this way, um, I just wonder if perhaps it would be smart to step back a little and, and perhaps dial back from forty thousand to maybe thirty for now, with the realization that as we do come to the end of our fiscal year, if we still have ten thousand dollars sitting there that hasn't been needed elsewhere in our park system, um, we could then go ahead and commit the additional ten thousand. I just, I mean, I think Courtney's point is well-taken, that to expend an entire line item this early in the fiscal year could put us in a tight spot.
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Heiser.
Just by way of information, as a follow-up to that, um, I was on the council when we decided to, uh, help essentially the last, with the last push to the park in, uh, J.C. Park. And I believe at that time, and Courtney, you were here, so maybe you can help me out, but I believe at that time, that line item was thirty thousand, uh, or somewhere, I don't think it was forty thousand. Uh, but it was a similar situation. I believe they came to us in January, uh, and, um, we went ahead and, and gave them the full amount, uh, wha- whatever was in there. I, thirty's sticking in my head. Um, and didn't see any repercussions. I, I think it's, uh, at least the way that council looked at it was, what are the ways that we can use this money to improve, um, the parks system in Riverton? And in that case, it happened to be, uh, there was one project that was, uh, to borrow a federal phrase, shovel-ready. Um, so we threw the entire amount out there, and there was not, uh, we didn't run into an issue of, man, we spent that thirty thousand, and now, now we need five more slides in Sunset Park, or something like that. So, um, while I think that is valid, I, I don't have an issue with committing the full amount, uh, having been through that history of, uh, committing pretty early in the budget year to a project like that, so.
Your Honor.
Any other comments, yes, Councilman Baker.
I guess I have a question. How does this relate to the committee that we have established? That's supposed to be looking into our city parks and, and coming up with some recommendations. I, I guess I'm concerned that those people need some money, uh, for study purposes, um, or something like that, and, um, and we haven't heard from them yet about their ideas and their approach. And then here we are, gonna spend all forty thousand dollars at one chunk, and, you know, it, that may simply mean we have inappropriate enough money in that line item to fix city park, but, uh, what I'm, I, I guess my concern is, is that if we, um, it, I, I kind of feel like maybe we're short-circuiting that committee or something. Um, I, I'm not, that's, that's my, um, my concern is, I hope that doesn't sound like I don't like skate parks, or I don't like skaters, and that isn't the issue at all. My concern is, is that we've, is that we went to this process and to try to improve the park, and now we've got some guys on a committee that are dedicated toward that purpose, and, you know, I don't, I don't know if we've got funds to continue then to support them, or do we have another, we have money in another line item that is gonna be useful to support that park development project?
Your Honor, the, well, the committee you're referring to is the, um, and that one hasn't even formed yet. I mean, we've, we've got like five applications right now for the, for the master plan committee.
I see.
That's not formed yet, and, you know, they, they may need some money later on, but I, I can't imagine before the next fiscal year, they're gonna be ready to do any of that, but I, I couldn't say that for sure. Under council contingency in your budget, you have fifteen thousand dollars. It's typically never spent, um, but that's there for the council to put towards projects. You could use that towards projects if there was some additional amount that you needed.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Would the, uh, the committee we're talking about, Craig Blumentzheim and, and Mr. Crook, uh, would they have other opportunities to get money from other organizations?
I would think so.
Your Honor, I, I would say absolutely. Um, there is, uh, one in particular that I serve on that has talked about this, so, um, I, first, I guess I would say, uh, we kind of went into that with that committee, at least the way that I remember it, that we didn't wanna spend twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars on a master plan for parks, uh, because we've been down that road already. Um, so if, if it was a nominal amount, uh, I think we kind of talked, we threw around the number five thousand dollars or seventy-five hundred, or something like that, we were okay with that, but not wanting to throw a bunch of money at a plan that, for the most part, been at least, uh, somewhat created and needs to just be built on from there. And so, um, there certainly are funding opportunities out there for recreational projects, um, that are aside from the city itself. So I think that that group, um, would have a very good chance at solidifying some funding, uh, from an outside source.
Your Honor.
Councilman Gardner.
Another bite. Um, the other thing that I think, the reason that we need to, to use the full amount, is if we're going for matching funds, at this point, that's more important for the volume. We still have control of the funds, and, and then go out and try to get matching funds, and forty thousand dollars of matching funds makes a lot better sense than thirty thousand. And if they can find other funding from other sources, from REC or something else, uh, and if REC would do the ex- the exact same thing, then, then we're gonna get a lot further down the road. And if they are terribly successful, they may not need any assistance next year, and we can shift that money back into the committee's location, and we can look at other improvements to the park. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Councilman Smith, do you have any comments?
Nothing further to add, no.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I, I've got one other question. It seemed to me like, um, several months ago, when the skateboard folks came to us, uh, we discussed the possibility of some in-kind, uh, services from the city during that construction phase. Uh, is, is, I suppose that comes out of other line items? And do we have any kind of an idea what that plays into? No.
Your Honor, I haven't. It just depends on how much work they would need, um, cause a lot of the equipment we would already have, so obviously you'd have some manpower, but we already have the manpower and then some equipment time, and, um, maybe digging out or preparing to... I, I don't have a dollar amount.
I, I guess that my, my, my concern there is that if there was some way to put a dollar figure on that, then we would be able to use that for match as well.
I, I think that, uh, I haven't commented on this to this point, but I'd share Councilman Fabian's concern about spending that entire amount. Uh, I feel very uncomfortable doing that, but, um, um, I, I think that once we start down that road and they start construction, we're going to be, um, ending up with a lot of city equipment down there doing landscaping and, you know, a, a lot of work, and I feel confident that the, the skateboarders will be, uh, involved as well, right up to their elbows. I think that's, goes without saying, and, and we appreciate that. But I think the, the forty thousand that you're talking about is just the first step off of, you know, and, and people say, well, that's in-kind, it doesn't cost the city anything, you've already got your manpower. Well, it does cost the city, because we're having to pay these people and pay the equipment, and on and on, so it's, um, and it's a, it's a good worthwhile project, but I just, um, you know, if we're, uh, had some kind of a real time crunch and had to have this commitment at this time, then I would, um, uh, feel more comfortable with it, but I don't think they're looking at getting started on construction until next, uh, spring, probably, if, if things work out, so, uh, I just don't see the, the rush. And if we were to give them twenty thousand at this time, and then, you know, as things progress, we would consider that what's needed, but that would be a, a pretty substantive, um, uh, vote of confidence in what they're, they're wanting to do, but, um, I, I can, I can live with it either way, but I, I guess I personally, uh, would prefer that we not spend the whole amount. Yes.
Um, and I would just say that for me, my, my concerns were actually pretty well alleviated by the realization that, number one, this type of thing has been done before, and number two, if we really find ourselves in a bind, we do have the ability to draw from another area to, you know, if we did find ourselves needing seventy-five hundred dollars for the master plan committee, we have it available, so, thank you.
I don't think this forty thousand is gonna break the city one way or the other. I think that we, you know, can, can make it. Um, it concerns me a little bit as well, that, that this is a city park for all of our citizens, not just the skateboarders, skateboarders. And so we're taking the entire budget for the entire, um, and shifting it over to one small organization, so, uh, there are just a lot of things going on there, but, um, anyway.
I would call the question, Your Honor.
Okay. We have a, um, motion on the floor to, uh, commit the, uh, full forty thousand to the Skateboard Association. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, mayor votes aye. Uh, motion passes. Ordinance number thirteen dash zero one zero, third and final reading, Weeds and Alley's. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number thirteen dash zero one zero by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, this is proposed ordinance number thirteen dash zero one zero on third and final reading, and ordinance amending Title Nine, Chapter nine point one-two, Section nine point one-two point one-nine-zero-A of the Riverton Municipal Code, providing additional language to reflect the property owner's responsibility of weeds and alleys, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Okay, the Chair would entertain a motion regarding, um, ordinance number thirteen dash zero one zero.
Your Honor, I make the motion, we approve ordinance thirteen dash zero one zero on third and final reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Uh, would the clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Todd Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Yes.
Councilman Rich Gar.
Yes.
Councilman Eric Heiser.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mary Ellen Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman John Lars Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Ron Wardness.
Yes. Okay, agenda item number twelve, motion passed. Uh, resolution number twelve eighty-four, application for high-service pumps mineral royalty grant, acting Public Services Director, report, please.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. The water treatment plant, high-service pumps, um, are basically thirty years old. In this last, um, September, the highest, the highest-yield pump went down. Luckily, it was in September, so we were still able to meet demand for the, for that last month, but we need to get them replaced. The project's actually already been built, or already been designed. We were hoping to put it in the Riverton Water Supply Project, but we've, um, run up to lack of funding in that, so with that pump going down, we were hoping to go out for an emergency grant, um, minerals royalty grant, for an eighty-twenty split on that. That is the maximum amount that we would be able to go, so eighty percent, eighty percent, um, would come from the grant, and would come from the water reserve, water reserves at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Would the city clerk please read resolution number twelve eighty-four by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, this is a resolution number twelve eighty-four, a resolution authorizing submission of a federal mineral royalty capital construction account grant application to the state, state loan and investment board on behalf of the govern- governing body for the city of Riverton, for the purpose of replacing the existing high-service pumps at the water treatment plant.
The Chair would entertain a motion regarding resolution number twelve eighty-four. It's been moved and seconded, is there a discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Smith.
Just, just one question on this, um, seeing this was kind of an unexpected thing that we needed to, a rush on, I guess, um, and with our water fund, the way we know it's on edge there, with that eighty-twenty split, how is that twenty percent, the one-twenty-eight one twenty-eight, two-fifty, from the water reserves, how will that affect our capital projects for this fiscal year, or will that affect them?
Your Honor, I don't, I don't think we're, uh, I've talked to Courtney about this at length, um, and we, we, we believe we'll be fine with this. This will be later in the year, um, but we have to do it sometime before the water treatment plant gets up and running, which is, would be in, I believe, in May. Um, otherwise, we would build a function at full capacity, and then it doesn't make a lot of sense to even start up the whole water plant if you've got one of them down, but this, this is to replace all three pumps since they're all put in at the same time.
I, I guess that's the only thing that, uh, my Scotch blood comes out. I apologize to all the Scotchmen out there, but, um, you know, if the other two pumps are running fine, I'd let them run until they cratered, and then, you know, just replace the one pump that's, that's gone, but, um, it may be the smart thing to do. I don't know. When you get into the mobilization and the purchasing of them, and you buy three of them, you get a discount and yada, yada, yada. I can just hear all the arguments, so, um, but if it was mine, I'd, sorry, Charlie, just keep, keep chugging, but, um...
Your Honor.
It's a lot of money.
Thousands.
Five, five hundred thousand, I think, is what the total budget is.
Your Honor, is it possible to replace one pump at a time?
I guess, Your Honor, it is. The project has been designed replacing all three. Like you stated, you've made all the arguments, but it would be possible just to, to, to replace them one at a time.
Your Honor, and sometimes when you're applying for grants, I mean, obviously there's a process involved, and so when you're doing three, if you just do one, then you have to go through this process of going to the mineral royalties and trying to get money, and sometimes it's easier to do one.
Next year, you'll be back for the next one.
Yeah. I mean, there's, it's a, and, and really, the reserves are set up for these type of issues that come up. I mean, that's what reserves are for. That's why we set aside reserves for emergency purposes where, I mean, we don't have much choice in at least one of them.
And I think the one, the one pump is, there's no choice. We recognize that we have to replace it. That's not the issue, um, but, so.
Is there any cost idea on what one pump is? It's not a third. This is a larger pump. Is there any, is there any way to, to give us any?
This is the largest of the three pumps. Is that correct?
Yes, Your Honor, it is correct. This is the largest of the three pumps. It is, um, three times larger than the next largest one, so no, it would not just be a third. It would be probably two-thirds of the cost. Um, I have a cost estimate. I just don't have it with me. I apologize for that.
I would make the, the statement that it's probably better if it's that large a pump, that this is a better process, the way it's going through. I'm a little in reserve since Courtney won't speak to it, and she's only looking at Steve. There's something there that we oughta know of, but, uh, as long as, uh, she's in agreement that we have reserves that we can, can, can take a bit, care of it, 'cause I think this is, this is really our job right here, sewer water and, and sanitation, um, or, or what we do, and so we oughta, we oughta pay special attention to that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Mayor votes aye. Agenda item number thirteen, acceptance of YDOT aeronautics state aid for an environmental assessment study at Riverton Regional Airport. Acting Public Services Director's report, please. This is Stephen's favorite.
This is my favorite.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, the environmental assessment is, um, part of the master plan for the runway nineteen. It's, um, which is a future improvement extension that is, um, being done, but there's a large stockpile that's going to have to be moved twice, and so Paul went to the aeronautics board, YDOT aeronautics board, and discussed with them the, um, the economy of basically just moving that dirt once, because it's gotta be moved for the runway, um, one-nineteen, which is the crosswind runway, and then for the extension of the runway ni- um, nineteen, and they agreed with that, and so they are allowing the, um, funding to be split as a ninety-ten split, so, um, there's just an agreement that we would recommend you approve on that.
This is where an environmental assessment is?
Correct. It's an environmental assessment. When you move dirt, um, with federal money, you have to do it. Basically, make sure there are no, nothing environmental that's being impacted, where you're taking the dirt from, and then where you're moving it to.
Okay. Do you like to comment, Mr. Weaver?
Well, yeah, even, Your Honor, even, even if you were to leave on dirt and you put dirt on top of it, you've gotta get an EA for that. Um, it, it's a process we have to go through. I don't necessarily agree with it, but, um, it's required through the FAA, and, uh, and it's a lot of money just for, for an environmental assessment of, of these, but any undisturbed land that you touch, you have to have an EA to even put anything on or disturb it, and so this is a process we've gotta do, and, and that's, that's part of the problem. I have a problem with it because it's, the federal government kinda has a new surrender neck, and we have to do what they tell us to do, otherwise...
But they're paying for ninety percent of it, is my understanding.
Right.
We're only...
Well, in this case, it's the state that's paying ninety percent, but it's, monies are flowing down from FAA to the state.
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Gard.
I was on the airport ward, and maybe Mary Ellen can help me with that. We just did an environmental statement for Jet Air Service, didn't we?
If I recall, yes.
And, but they're not covering any of the same items.
No.
One's dirt and one's...
Yeah, one was birds and wildlife was the last one.
Yes.
Getting nickel and dimed to death here.
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Fabian.
My, I guess my only question on this is, um, you know, as we're looking at this, is, is it a, is it a requirement that we have to extend this runway? Is this something that they've also mandated to us, I'm assuming?
Yes, Your Honor. It's, uh, our runway is lower than all the other standards across the country, and so they've gotta raise that runway to meet the same standard as... So if, if you're flying into Riverton, or you're flying into any other airport, they, they want them all standardized the same so that you don't have differing conditions that's gonna cause you to wreck, or, um, and so that's, yeah, it's on the docket that we're, we've gotta do, and that'll be in two thousand and fifteen.
And, and Your Honor, some further information. When we pick up all that dirt and we lower that runway, we have to do something with the dirt, and we have a ravine at the end of nineteen, and we can't just put it in the ravine. It would make sense to put it in the ravine, but it has to be put in the ravine correctly, compacted correctly, not loosely, and so if we do it right, it would be in the right position. We wouldn't move it twice, and so the dirt would be in position to extend nineteen. Wouldn't necessarily have to be extended, but it makes sense to put it in that position, and it makes sense to put it incorrectly so that we don't have to take it back out and recompact it. So the concept is really good. We don't end up with a pile of dirt that's in the way. Um, it is put someplace, but the, all the, all the governing bodies make it extremely difficult to get it worked out.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, the chair would entertain a motion. Um, I guess we've got a motion on it that we wouldn't be discussing it. Uh, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Your Honor, just a point at where we don't have a motion yet, so I will gladly make that motion.
We don't, we don't have a motion yet?
We do not.
All right.
So I would make the motion to accept the, uh, YDOT aeronautics state aid for the environmental assessment at Riverton Regional Airport.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Councilman Heiser.
Actually, that was Kristen. She caught that, so I won't take the credit for it.
I, I got lost in the minutia. Anyway, reports and comments. Council committee reports and council members' roundtable. Uh, can we start with you, Councilman Smith?
I don't have anything else tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Fabian.
Um, nothing tonight. Uh, the, the one thing I would say is just that, uh, I did appreciate the presentation from the Center for Hope, and, and I do think that they are doing a, doing a good job and, and trying to move the needle, so, thank you.
Your Honor, I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Uh, Your Honor, rec board, uh, District Twenty-Five Rec Board met last night. Lars and myself were present on behalf of the city. Uh, decided the grant funding meeting for this year will be held, uh, Monday, January thirteenth. That'll be at six P.M. at the School District Twenty-Five Administration offices. So this is the yearly, uh, meeting for all things recreation to be funded by District Twenty-Five and the Recreation Board. Um, there's the, obviously the veterans that are there every year, but, uh, just to get the word out early so that folks can head out to, uh, the website, which I believe the applications are available on both Central Wyoming College and School District Twenty-Five's websites. Uh, those apps aren't out yet, but we expect them out within the next week, so, um, get them out in plenty of time, and then, uh, folks can remember that date, and I'll give that date again in December, but, uh, it's Monday, January thirteenth, six P.M. at the School District Twenty-Five Administration offices. That's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Christensen.
Your Honor, I have nothing to report.
Councilman Baker? No report, was?
I stole his thunder.
Oh, I couldn't. He, he knows about the rec board that I do, so that's...
City Administrator's report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, we've got the WAM winner workshop coming up, and we've got to officially designate, uh, a delegate, uh, that will be voting in behalf of the city, and then an alternate, and so typically, that's always been the mayor, and Councilman Guard is the alternate, um, but I guess you guys can do whatever you want.
Okay.
We just need a motion on that, and I will fill it out.
Huh? How come I always get to vote? I will be happy to defer that, uh, duty to you, Mr. Councilman Gard.
I'm, I'm perfect where I'm at.
So I would make the motion to appoint, uh, the mayor as the WAM voting delegate.
The only advantage I can see, uh, with being the voting delegate is you get to spend Saturday morning there, where everyone else has gone home Friday night, so, uh, I'm happy to fulfill that, that duty, so...
I think we just need a second.
Oh, and I've got a few things...
I'd second that.
We've got a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Aye. No. Okay.
Uh, we do have, uh, green waste pickup. We'll be stopping, uh, the blue cans that you have, or out in the alleys, will stop being picked up on November twenty-second. The facility will stay open through November twenty-fourth, which is that Sunday, so that gives you that last weekend to get anything to the facility. Uh, we have five applications for the Master Plan and Trails Committee. Still encourage people to submit if they're interested in being on that.
Actually, we have six.
Oh, we have six, and another one. Great.
We just have a new one this evening, so...
Great. And then, uh, the final thing is, uh, right now, we don't currently have anything for the work session next week. We have a possibility that someone from YDOT's, YDOT Aeronautics will be available. We really wanna talk about the airport. There's a lot of things going on in the airport industry, particularly with Great Lakes, what's going on. Um, there's been a lot of canceled flights, um, and a lot of it has to do with hours of pilots, um, but, uh, there's a gentleman down in YDOT that has a, a great slideshow and, and would like to present that to the council and the airport board at the same time, but, uh, if he's not available, we don't have anything for next week for, uh, work session, but if that comes up, then, then we will. That's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Um, I'd just like to comment that we had a grand opening at the Mammoth Music, uh, this last week, and that was a real fun event, and I wanna compliment the Guard Brothers for the beautiful job that you did on the Mammoth Music. It really is, it's beautiful. If you have a chance to go, go look through it, why, it's a great improvement on our main street, and it's really neat to see private individuals investing that kind of money on our main street. I think that's, that's pretty special. Um, around here, we had Halloween event, and that was kinda fun. Um, they, uh, I was going to be involved myself, but they told me I had to wear a mask, so I wore the one that I did, and it was kinda fun, but we had several of the city staff here. Uh, I don't know how many pounds of candy we gave out, but it was a lot of fun, and, um, I agree that the, uh, report by, uh, Mr. Yellow Kidney was, uh, great. The Center for Hope, I think, is something that seems to be moving in the right direction. I know it's causing the city a little bit of heartburn at this time, uh, to pick up the slack that they're having to, to adjust their, um, numbers of people that they can take in, but I think it's all going to work out in the, in the, in the long run, so I'm real optimistic there. Um, attended a funeral this, this last week as well of a longtime resident that everyone knows, Bob Sye, and Bob was an attorney in town for years and years, and he was one of the good guys, and, uh, he was a great loss to our community, so... At any rate, um, I can't think of anything else. Um, we do have an executive session, is my understanding?
Yes, and one last thing. The city hall is closed on Monday for Veterans Day.
So the chair would entertain a motion for executive session?
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we adjourn into executive session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Your Honor, we need to state what it's for.
I'm sorry?
We need to state what it's for.
Oh, we do. Okay. Uh, we can go into executive session for litigation, considering litigation to which our governing body is or may be a party in accordance with Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four zero five A-I-I, or real estate, consideration of site selection or purchase of real estate in accordance with Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A-V-I-I, or personnel, considering the appointment, employment, right to practice, dismissal, complaints, or charges against a public officer, professional person or employee in accordance with Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A-I-I, and for the purpose of considering offers, tendering wages, salaries, benefits, or terms of employment during negotiations in accordance with Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A-X. Okay, motion carried. We are in executive session.